Town council meeting at seven o'clock. We're gonna do things a little different. Would you please rise for the Parker Police Department color guard? For presentation of the colors, please.
Color guard. On three, two. Ready. Up. Forward. March. Colors left. March. Color guard. Up. Present. Out.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Colors reverse. March. Color guard. Up. Ready. Prepare to post the colors. Ready. Ready. To. Present. Order. Ready. Face. Forward. March.
Please be seated. All right. Next up on the agenda is a special presentation. We have the Spring 2019 class for the Police Department Citizens Academy. I am tasked with reading a little bio and then I'll ask the, all the members to come up, once I'm done, to join us and face out towards the audience and then Chief King's gonna have some comments. With that being said, the Police Department's free 10-week Citizens Police Academy program gives participants firsthand information about how the Police Department operates. Classes focus on criminal law, mounted patrol, evidence, dispatch, traffic laws, accident reconstruction, DUI laws, K-9, and many other topics. In addition to the interactive classes, participants are able to attend an optional trip to the law enforcement firearms training facility where they fire weapons used by Parker Police Officers. With this being said, will all the graduates please come up and here and face the audience, please? And with that, Chief King, please come down and give us a few comments.
Thank you for going through the 10 weeks. I hope you know a little bit more about the Parker Police Department, town. You know, I think there's comments maybe in the past and talked about you with like the family having one guy charged so much, but we really appreciate everything you've ever done and spending that time with us. I hope it definitely was worth the while. And Chris Peters, Bree, where are you at? Thank you, too, because without you guys, you were there almost every Thursday night. And some of the staff that we have, the officers, the dispatchers, and everybody who taught, I wanna thank them as well. But thank you, Chris. Thank you, Bree. Before he does, is there any comments that anybody would like to make?
It was amazing.
I felt, thank you all for taking your time to do that. For what they do, it's amazing. We really appreciate it.
We got great people.
Every juror should go to one of them.
Please.
And now you're part of Parker Police Family, so thank you, Chris.
Yes. Thank you for the support, Chief, for the program. We own two of these every year. I love being a part of these every time. Looking forward to the all one, but thank you so much for making this spring such a great one. Really wanna thank you again like I have from the beginning to take your time to learn more about what you do. It's fantastic. So, we can get a picture.
Ready? One, two, three. There we go. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. They're getting better. All right, so this way. Yeah.
Good evening, town.
Hello.
How are you guys?
Good.
Always a pleasure to see all of you. Just wanted to give you a quick update of what we're doing at the Parker Chamber. Omar Castillo, I'm the vice chair of the Parker Chamber. But some of the things we're working on a couple of weeks from now, you know, we'll obviously be having a little celebration called Parker Day, so we've been working really hard on that. Dennis has been working really hard with that, as well as the management company that's helping out with that as well. You guys will see, the posters are posted up all over town as with Parker Days is coming up. Few of the things I kinda wanted to touch on is some of the entertainment for this year. A lot of the bands that we're gonna be doing this year are more tribute bands. So Thursday night, for example, starts at six o'clock. We'll be having some tribute bands that night. The best one, John, Bruce Springsteen closes out the night, so got you covered on that one. And then Friday night, some more tribute bands as well. For example, we have a Heart tribute band, a Foreigner tribute band, Michael Jackson, for those of you who are Michael Jackson fans. And then closing that out with Rolling Stones. And then Saturday ends up being more tribute bands, but the exciting thing about Saturday night at eight o'clock, we have some tribute bands more along the lines of some more famous acts that are out there night right now. So we have a Kenny Chesney tribute band, a Tim McGraw tribute band. And for those of you that couldn't get any tickets to Garth Brooks, Garth Brooks will be here Saturday night, which is Garth Guy featuring Dean Simmons. So if you haven't had a chance to look at some of these on YouTube or Facebook, these guys look and sound just like the real acts. And then Sunday, we'll close it out with church service and then some more tribute bands. So looking forward to the Parker Days this year. Couple more things, just, you know, we're working, continue to work hard on workforce solutions for the town of Parker and for all our small businesses as well, as some of the businesses coming in. So that's the update. Any questions for me?
Well done. Nope. Nope, I think we're all in agreement. We're looking forward to Parker Days. Appreciate your update. Thanks a lot, Omar.
And you ordered good weather.
Absolutely. I heard the key word is eighty-six degrees and we'd be good to go. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is public comment. Public comment is a three-minute limit. No action will be taken on these items. This public comment is for anything not on the agenda. With that being said, is there anybody for public comment? Name and address, please.
Evening. My name is Corey Nelson. My address is 213-98 East Wondertainment Place. Is this working?
It is.
Hopefully it'll work. Is this thing gonna be working? Thank you. Oh, I'm already running. Okay. Folks, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Corey Nelson and I am a career prosecutor of the city and county of Denver. Been there for 29 years. The reason I live in Parker are these two people right here. When we first moved to Parker, my little daughter and her grandfather had her picture taken out in front of where Legend High School was gonna be built. Ever since then, she viewed Legend High School as being her school. On opening day of Legend High School, she was there. And she got a little T-shirt that said she was gonna be a future Titan. She later joined the Titan Marching Band when she was even a student at Cimarron Middle School. And then as a freshman, we had her picture already taken back in the gym. These days, she is a musician. She plays violin for the Legend High School marching, Legend High School Orchestra. The reason I'm here tonight is not only because of my daughter, my wife, Kim, who's a teacher at Legacy Point Elementary. These are the two folks, they're the most important people in my life, and they're in the public schools every single day. I also have been a volunteer for the Public Safety Advisory Committee for the Denver Sheriff's Office for going on nine years. Part of that job has been overseeing the expenditure of money for the Justice Center sales tax. Back in February of 2018, after the Parkland High School shooting, we formed a subcommittee on public school safety. And we had a hearing, a public hearing at Legend High School on April 29, 2018. From that study, we went back to the Public Safety Advisory Committee and recommend that we supported the concept of taking 0.13% of our Douglas County sales tax and converting it for SRO programs. That would provide over $9 million of taxes for that program this year and leading up to over $12 million by 2030. I'm asking you to place an item on your agenda to take a look at our proposal to fund school resource officers, because that would bring millions of dollars to Parker Police Department to provide SROs. Parker Police Department estimates they need only five SROs to fulfill their needs for schools. Either comes out of the sales tax or out of your budget. I'm asking you to take a look at this project, because we can bring money back. Since we pay taxes, let's bring it back to Parker for our SRO program. We all rely upon you to provide us with safety for our families. We ask you to take a serious look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:15.
Oh, no.
Oh, do we have one? Oh, yeah, please come. I'm sorry. Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that.
Hello, how are you guys doing tonight? So my name is Mark Zoller, Jr. I have lived in the town of Parker since I was 12 years old. Back when I went to school, we didn't really have anybody to help us with our minds, to help us with our problems, to help us with the adversities that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. I am too in agreeance with having more SROs in our school. I've created a group on Facebook called Help Protect Our Kids at School. We have, we've grown rapidly. We have about 3,000 members. We started a petition that is now turned into the governor, Jared Polis. We also turned it into Abe Leyden, who is a Douglas County Commissioner. We had a rally yesterday downtown at Civic Center and Abe had told us that you guys are considering putting another $3 million towards SROs. I had just read an article from Douglas County stating that SROs will not be involved in the $10 million budget. I find that, I find that very concerning, especially with, you know, no really open resources from our public schools that we do pay taxes on to help our kids deal with that type of stuff. And of course, we as parents do the best that we can, but it would really great to, it would be really great if they had someone other than their parents to talk to. Kids don't always open up to everything that, you know, that they're thinking about with their parents. Maybe they think they're gonna get in trouble or, you know, something like that. But I would really, really, really appreciate that agenda to be put forth and more effort put into it. Our petition has over 24,000 signatures to the governor. We also have a lot of people backing our common purpose, which is to, which is to protect our kids at school. We also have a whole bunch of people backing a public strike, which it's a pretty wide, long shot. But we are putting out demands to the state of Colorado, and if these certain demands aren't gonna put in place, we do have over 5,000 people willing to strike schools and go to homeschooling. And those kids won't return to public schools until more active measures are taken. And that does include SROs. But please, I'm begging you to, you know, help our children out, get them the resources that they need. Sometimes they don't feel comfortable coming to us. My children do. I have a very open relationship with my kids, but not all parents and children have a great relationship. And I feel that our kids need to be handled, not only, you know, with the curriculum that's put forth, but they also need to be able to learn how to deal with adversity. It takes a village to raise good people. It takes a village to raise good kids. And please, once again, please, please, we need more SROs in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment? Thank you. Seeing that, we will close public comment at 7:19 and move on to our next item. That is reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. We will start with Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Councilwoman Pogan and I had the honor of interviewing four citizens that have applied for the planning commission vacancies. To say it simply, we are very blessed in this town and this county with qualified individuals. It is always a hard choice when it comes down to picking or choosing volunteers to fill on a commissions, because everybody is just so talented and just, anybody could be, to be bad fit. So we have made our recommendation. That will come back to council. And by mid-June, we'll have ourselves a couple new alternate members to our planning commission. Just very proud to be part of that process. And also, I had the honor of serving down at the farmer's market yesterday with Councilman Toborg and Councilman Dyak. We did, we had a booth and we had some maps and pictures and we allowed, we wanted folks to come up and ask us questions, anything we could do to kill the myths and talk about what the truths are and what we're doing with the parcels in downtown, listing them and just getting an idea what the private sector things could happen there. Just great to see everybody. Saw a lot of folks I hadn't seen in a while, so I think it's very important for us to get out and be in front of the, in front of the people. And hopefully someday we can, we can work out a town hall kind of event and just chat with everybody. And then also, it was Touch a Truck. It's Public Work Week. Recognizing the guys and gals that work in our Public Works Department and take care of us on a daily basis. Unfortunately, they go unrecognized quite often and pave our roads and keep us safe at snow time and whatnot. So very, very proud. I know the kids enjoyed being able to climb into the front loader, into the sweeper and then just check it out. It's just a really cool thing to be part of. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protam. I was at the Parker Water and Sand District meeting recently, and they are actively moving forward with either a merger or some operation where they're taking over Castle Pines Water or Metro District. So I'm not sure how they're gonna, what they're doing with all that yet, but they're deepened in negotiations on that.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Toborg.
I just wanna say, is it Mr. Zorkler? Is it how you say Zorkler?
Zoller.
Zoller. I was gonna say, I thought you did a fantastic job on Channel 7 on Saturday morning, and I thought your event down at the Capitol, I talked to Abe afterwards, and it sounded like it was fantastic. So thank you for what you and your organization are doing to further this conversation. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Lewis?
I have several things. On Wednesday, Councilman Rivera, myself, Michelle, our town administrator, and we had unusual Matt Carlson, our economic and development guru. We all attended the Partnership of Douglas County Governments at the Event Center. It was an extremely well-attended meeting. We had many subjects on the agenda, one of which everyone was talking about. Our assessor was there, and many people asked about the values of their properties and how much they, they had gone up. And she explained some things that people didn't understand, so it was very informative, well-attended. Also, I had, we were at, Councilman Toborg and I had, we do this quarterly to, twice a year. We met last week with the Greater Parker Foundation. And we are happy to announce that we had some folks. Marwin and Patsy Fowes.
Fowes.
Fowes, I believe, is the correct enunciation. They contributed $1,000, so we are very thankful for that and would like to acknowledge them publicly, as well as we have sent them a written thank you. Also, just to announce publicly to thank the Douglas County Housing Partnership that I was term limited on, served for six years. I'd just like to thank them publicly on the record for the lovely photograph that they gave me a couple of weeks ago. And on Tuesday, I was honored at the county commissioners' meeting for 17 years of service on the Douglas County Cultural Council. And I was, you know, I was only about 18 when I started. So during that 17-year period, I was, I was involved with people that we were able to, the Douglas County Cultural Council gives recommendation to the county commissioners on the SCFD funding that comes to our county, and specifically to the Tier Three groups is what Douglas County Cultural Council made recommendations on. And over that 17-year period, we had over $7.6 million that came back to organizations here predominantly in our county. So I'd like to thank the county commissioners for, for the lovely plaque and honoring me and saying nice things that, you know, they really didn't have to say. So it was, it was an honor to work with that group. And just a couple of quick reminders, for those of you in the audience, it's called Vintage and Vibrant. If you have not heard about this, Wednesday at the Pace Center, this Wednesday, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., it's going to be all types of keynote speakers. They're giving presentations for people that may be interested, that are in the later years of their, their life, that you can come. There's a registration, early registration is $5, and at the door, it's only seven. You don't have to come and stay. You can come and go, but they're going to be discussing, you know, all different types from social security scenarios, anything that has to do with, what do they call us? The senior population? What, so that will, at Pace Center. Also, as a reminder, for those of you who are going to be in town, the memorial service that will be at the Parker Cemetery on the 27th, it starts at 10:00 a.m. If you've not attended this event before, it, bring your handkerchief or your Kleenex, because it is well worth the moments and time that you spend there. If it, if it is not like weather today, you will need an umbrella for the sun, and if it is today weathers, you will need an umbrella for the, for the moisture. So I think that's all I have.
Thank you very much. My activities on the 8th, Cherry Creek Valley Rotary Club. Councilmember Rivera and myself attended the annual police awards lunch. Great event. We honored more than a few, I think, law enforcement individuals. Worth the, very worthy people. On the 9th, had E470 board meeting. We accepted the annual audit. It was a clean opinion from the auditors, KPMG, so that was good. We also talked about the quarterly dashboard report. Traffic is up 1.54% so far this year versus last year. We also approved a couple consultant contract extensions. This is anticipation of a debt refinancing in 2020. It's been a 2004 board goal to achieve level of debt. Once level debt is achieved, then things could sort of be discussed, such as potentially streamlining tolls, having no toll increases, even maybe some toll reductions. But we are gonna go through a study to discuss that. We are gonna have a toll study by CDM Smith doing that as well. We also adopted a strategic plan, so to me, that's the first step in creating greater transparency and accountability to customers. On the 13th, I, as a member of Dr. Cog, attended a metro mayor's discussion regarding alternative transportation funding. I also attended the county commissioners' work session regarding school safety. On the 14th, Dr. Cog chaired the Regional Transportation Committee. What that is, it's a committee consisting of RTD and CDOT members and executive directors to review and discuss items for our Dr. Cog board meeting, which was on the very next day. And with that, the only Dr. Cog board item of note was Parker's gonna be getting approximately $3.1 million for Parker projects from regional funds, in addition to other county and CDOT funding. It'll bring that total up to $4.1 million. And to me, I take great pride in that, because up until now, we have gotten, I think, $700,000. So hopefully that can continue in future years. And on Friday, I attended the Richgate Station grand opening. So with that, we will go on to the next item. The next item is consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no separate discussion of consent items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. With that being said, council?
I move to approve consent agenda items A through L.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Rivera and a second by Councilmember Lewis. And with that, we will wait to vote.
It's fast tonight. It's fast tonight.
It's fast, yeah.
It's 'cause Mike's not here.
All right. Consent agenda has been passed unanimously, 5-0. With that being said, we will have item seven, public hearings, Anthology West Metropolitan District, number five and six. Resolution number 19-031, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Consolidated Service Plan for Anthology West Metropolitan District, five and six. Kristen?
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council. This is a resolution to approve a First Amendment to the Consolidated Service Plan for Anthology West Metropolitan Districts, numbers five and six. 2016, town council approved the amended and restated service plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan Districts, number two and three, and a consolidated service plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan Districts, number two and three, and Anthology West Metropolitan District, numbers four through six. This First Amendment to the Consolidated Service Plan is proposed for an increase in debt authorization, and specific only to Anthology West Metropolitan Districts, numbers five and six, in connection with the development of the property within those districts. Here tonight is Tricia Harris from the Law Firm of White Here tonight is Tricia Harris from the Law Firm of White Bear, Anglia, Tanaka, and Waldron. She represents the districts, and she does have a PowerPoint presentation on the proposed service plan amendment, and can answer any questions you might have.
Before I start with my presentation, I'm gonna have Brock Chapman make a few opening statements.
Hi, I'm Brock Chapman, I'm representing the applicant at 7200 South Alton Way, Suite C400, Centennial 80112. Good evening, members of the council. Hopefully, I look vaguely familiar, because I was here last council meeting with Sunmark filing number 1, the zoning amendment and sketch plan you all unanimously approved. And so I wanted to connect the dots for you all, that this is the district boundaries that essentially follows that same project. So, so it's not too far off the radar screen, I wanted to let you know what you were all discussing in terms of the overall project. Also, for some context, we recently submitted the Sunmark filing number 1 Platts and CDs for staff review and referrals, so that's in process. And now, as part of this same overall approval process, we simply need to update the Metro District Service Plan for this exact same project area, District number 5. We have some experts tonight to explain exactly what this is, but if you're like me, I'm not a, I'm not a master's in public finance, I'm more of a land use guy and developer. So as you think about this tonight, in addition to explaining what it is, it's also important to fully understand what it's not. And I just wanted to get a few things on the record. It's not a mill rate increase, it's not a tax rate increase, and there is no additional district powers being asked for in this amendment. It's just an increase to the allowable debt limit. And rather than try to delve into that, I'll introduce Tricia Harris, who is our Metro District Council. And we also have Mike Sullivan, if necessary, to go over the finance details. He's with DA Davidson and can also answer some questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brock. As Brock said, we're here on behalf of Anthology West Metropolitan Districts, really just 5 and 6. These two districts are part of a multi-district structure that also includes Anthology West Metropolitan Districts 2 and 3 and 4 as well. Kristin, how do I advance?
I have a good slide.
Oh, I tell you, okay. Perfect, thank you. It's kind of hard to see the colors on, on this slide, but this shows the boundaries of all of the districts. The area in kind of the orange color is District number 2. The pink is District number 4, the blue is District number 3, which that's where kind of the clubhouse and the, the pool and those sorts of things. 5 is the area kind of on top in the yellow, and then 6 is a tiny little piece within there. So these districts are all under a consolidated service plan that was approved by the council back in 2016. And under that service plan, if you could move on to the next slide, please, thank you. At the time that we had that service plan approved, two, two and a half years ago, you know, we were under a different scenario at that time. At that point, we have, had estimated the cost of public infrastructure to be about $5.8 million, and we have an existing debt limit of $10 million for all of the districts combined. That's a total aggregate debt limit that we have. At that point, we were anticipating District number 4 issuing about $6.6 million in debt. District number 2 had already issued about $1.9 million in debt at that time. Our debt, debt limit, mill levy, our debt, mill levy limit is 35 mills, but that adjusts per Gallagher. So at the time that we had the existing service plan approved, our debt limit at that time, our mill levy was 42.827 mills. And again, as Brock said, we're not asking for that to be increased at all. Okay? As I mentioned, the existing debt limit for all of the districts is $10 million. District number 1 has issued 8, 1.85 million, or I'm sorry, District number 2 has issued $1.85 million in debt. District number 4 has issued about $6.4 million. So that leaves us about $1.7 million in authority, debtting, you know, bonding authority, authority that the districts have. But since 2016, we've seen some changes in the market conditions that have brought us to where we are today. We were talking earlier about, you were at a meeting where the assessor was talking about increased assessed evaluations. So part of that is what's driving this today, is that we've seen increased valuations on the properties within the districts, increased unit prices. So the, the new inventory that's going to be marketed in District number 5 is, you know, at a higher price point than what we've seen before. And so that results in an increased capacity for the districts to issue debt to pay for some of the infrastructure that the developer's going to be putting in. And this slide just kind of shows you kind of a summary of where we were in 2016 as to where we are today. You can see that unit prices were ranging from 300, about 360,000 to 433,000 in 2016. Now it's 425,000 to about 636,000. You know, the bonded capacity for districts 5 and 6, if we looked at it back at 20, in 2016, would have been about 3.5 million. Now we're looking at about 6.9 million that those districts can support. And again, I've already talked about the, the mills. We would not increase the, the amount of mills that could be, that could be levied. And this kind of just is a summary of, of the improvements that are going to be going into District number 5, that would be financed with some of the additional bonding capacity that we have. So in summary, again, like Brock said, all, all this amendment really does at its heart is increase that debt capacity for districts number, numbers 5 and 6. So it would give them an additional $7.5 million in bonding authority, which is in addition to the 10 million that we already have. But again, it would only be districts 5 and 6 that would be able to issue that additional debt. And we have had no objections filed based on the notices that we've submitted prior to this meeting. So now I would open up to any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Council, any questions? Councilmember Rivera?
Could you speak to what that bonding capacity or what that capital will be used for, please?
Yes, it will, and Derek can kind of help me a little bit with this, too. Derek Williams is our engineer. If you look at the projected improvements, we're looking at improvements to French Creek Avenue, South Great Plainway, Matzenbacher. So a lot of it is street improvements, drainage improvements, water sewer improvements, those sorts of things.
So, but I guess, it's to benefit the area as a whole and not just the specific District 5 and 6, correct?
Correct.
Hi, my name's Derek Williams, I also represent the developer address 7200 South Alton Way, Suite C400, Centennial Colorado 80112. And yes, what you're seeing here is two cost estimates. The projected improvements on the regional public improvements do serve the region, Great Plainway, French Creek Avenue, the improvements to Oak Gulch, which we just received our provisional permit from the Army Corps on that, and then the parks and recs. The second cost estimate is the onsite public improvements that would only serve that development itself and would not be a regional improvement.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions, council?
So just a minute, what, what is incorporated in District 6?
Pardon me, what was the question again?
What is in District 6?
District 6 is what we call kind of the administrative district. So it's just a small little piece of, of property. So it doesn't have residence, it's not going to be a developed district. It kind of coordinates all-
Just carving that off for an administrative district.
Right, yep. Exactly.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, we will, we will open this item to public comment at 7:40. Is there anybody here for public comment for this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:41. And council, additional discussion or a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-031, conditional upon approval of ordinance number 9.264.1, approving the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the Town of Parker, Colorado, and Anthology West Metropolitan Districts number 5 and 6, please.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Rivera, a second by Councilmember Lewis, and council when the box pops up, please vote. The next item, Item 8, is a resolution, Resolution 19-026, continued from 5/16/19, a resolution authorizing possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages in Discovery Parks subject to certain conditions. Kristin?
Good evening again. On May 6, the Town Council approved ordinance numbers 5.28.24 and 12.03.5 to allow the public possession and consumption of alcohol in designated parklands within the Town of Parker. That is accomplished through a resolution, which designates what those parklands are and any conditions that might attach to that allowance of possession and consumption of alcohol. And so on that agenda, we also had Resolution 1926, and council voted to continue to this meeting so that I could revise the resolution based on direction received at the May 13 study session. Based on that direction, revised the resolution to allow alcohol possession and consumption during the hours of 4:00 and 9:00 p.m. on the following concert dates, May 30, June 13, 20, and 27, July 11, 18, and 25, and August 1. Alcohol is allowed between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. Concerts begin at 6:00 p.m. People start arriving for those concerts between 3:00 and 4:00, so we're, we're trying to accommodate them coming to the park and setting up and getting ready for the concerts. And then they generally end around 8:00 p.m., so I've had alcohol consumption end at 9:00 p.m. to allow, if there's any sort of rain delay, and sort of allow people time to pack up and before they head home. And then I've also retained the prohibition on any glass containers.
Great, thank you. Council, a discussion on this item?
No, I just like to remind the public and put on record, this is a pilot. We're running it for the summer of this year to see how it takes over. Obviously, barring no horrible things, it's gonna be, it's gonna be okay, but we're still gonna reassess what it does, what the burden is to PD, and if it's, if it's beneficial to the citizens. We had a situation prior, we had citizens that were partaking, we had police officers that were observing citizens partake, and citizens were not misbehaving. They were adults, they were in their park, and they were doing what they, some of us feel should be able to do. But at the point, the way the law was written, they were breaking the law. So that puts our PD in an unfortunate position. And if an adult could behave themselves and consume alcohol in a responsible manner, we, we believe that, that we should allow that to happen certain times and certain days in certain areas. So this is a step. This is a step to, to see if that will work at concerts in the park, and if it is, it, it takes an uncomfortable situation for PD and an uncomfortable situation for law-abiding citizens off the record.
All right. With, with that being said, I would like to open-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanna add something here. The other thing that I, we need, we discussed in, will be in this ordinance, is that no glass will be allowed in the park at this time. The other situation is we'll be monitoring the timeframes that this is allowed, to see how that works with this pilot.
And additionally, Denver, City and County of Denver opened, opened up, when the state law changed, they opened up public consumption in, to, to all their parks. I have spoken very informally with, with a city council member in Denver. He promises to, to share any kind of written reports. He says, he says very, he says it's, it's, it's positive based on, on the response he's getting from his staff, but again, when, when we review this, we can take that into account, if available, to, to figure out where we go from here as well. So with that, with-
Also, Mr. Mayor Protam, because this is being passed as a resolution and not as an ordinance, if we find that the program is not beneficial to, to the community, a resolution can be repealed within a week's time. So it's not something that, unlike an ordinance, it, it's something that can, is more fluid, come on, that's more fluid and can be repealed if necessary in, in a week's time, as I said.
All right. And with that, Kristin, public comment on the resolution?
Do take public comment on-
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to open this, this resolution, open for public comment at 7:46. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to this resolution? Seeing none, I will close public comment at 7:47. Council, additional discussion or a motion?
I just think as long as we can put a quirk in it, if it doesn't work out.
That's right.
At least it's reaction, right? Didn't fall flat.
Yeah, I got that one, I didn't get the fluid.
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-026.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Rivera, a second by Councilmember Lewis. Council, when, when the button pops, please.
It's really fast tonight.
You got the wrong one up.
No?
Already voted.
There we go.
Okay.
All right, the resolution passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, next item, Item 9, ordinance. A, we have an ordinance number 3.342, second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend sections 13.07.080, 13.07.090, 13.07.100, and 13.10.230 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning Mylar copies. Bryce?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, members of council. As noted before you tonight, is a proposed LDO amendment, Land Development Ordinance Amendment regarding submittal of Mylars. So the purpose of this amendment is to change the number of required plat Mylars from 2 to 1, and to remove requirements for paper documents for plat applications. Plat Mylars are documents printed on a plastic film that is better suited than paper for long-term preservation of documents. Currently, the town requires applicants to provide two Mylar copies, one for Douglas County for recordation, and one for retention by the town. Electronic copies of Platts eliminate the need for paper copies and the need to store plat Mylars. Douglas County, with this proposal, will still receive a Mylar copy for recordation, and language regarding paper document submittal requirement is also removed with this proposal. On April 11, 2019, Planning Commission considered this ordinance regarding Mylars, and they recommended unanimously that Town Council approve an ordinance to amend the land development ordinance regarding the reduce, reduction of the number of Mylars to be submitted to the town. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Council, any questions for Bryce? Seeing none, I will open this ordinance for public comment at 7:50. Anybody here for public comment on Mylar copies?
Dwayne? I see Twitter.
They're winding up.
That's right. Seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:50. And council, I will entertain additional discussion or a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 3.342 on second reading.
Second.
All right. I have a, I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, a second by Councilmember Rivera. Council, when the button pops, please vote.
So it's being here, so it's not moving it here. It is moving it up on the screen.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item, ordinance number 1.532, second reading, a bill for an ordinance conveying certain real property by easement to Parker Water and Sanitation District at Stroh Soccer Park. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of council. I'll be presenting this item this evening on behalf of Mr. Chris Hudson. He's attending a wedding. I believe it got moved indoors. It was supposed to be outdoors, but. So I'll go into a little bit of background on this easement and then show you where the proposed easement is going to be dedicated. So about 10 years ago, the town dedicated to Parker Water Sanitation District an easement for water and sewer lines adjacent to the Stroh Soccer Park. These new utilities were necessary for future development south of the Stroh Road area and in the vicinity of Crowfoot Valley Road. Parker Water started construction on this new infrastructure in 2009, but they ran into a problem with the sewer line that they were boring underneath Stroh Road adjacent to the soccer park, just immediately west of the Cherry Creek Bridge under Stroh there. The district elected to delay the completion of the sanitary sewer easement because they were spending a lot of time, a lot of effort trying to get the line in. And as you know, the economy dropped off in 2008, 2009. There wasn't a lot of development occurring in that part of town, and so they elected to delay the installation of this last segment of sewer line because of that reason. And as you know, today, that area of town is booming, and now they need to finish the construction of that sewer line. So last year, Parker Water engaged a consultant to redesign the segment of sewer that they ran into the conflict with, and that resulted in the sewer line crossing of Stroh Road shifting a few hundred feet to the west of its previous location, and it requires a new easement to be dedicated to cover that new alignment. So this is the easement location. This is an aerial, here's the Stroh Soccer Park. The original alignment took the sewer line under Stroh Road in the area where my cursor is showing here. They've shifted the alignment to where it would cross now underneath Stroh Road at this location, and this is where the additional easement would be required. This is a blow up of the easement area. The area that is highlighted in yellow is the actual permanent easement for the sewer, and then the area in orange or red is going to be the temporary construction easement that would be vacated as soon as the construction is completed. Parker Water has agreed to restore all areas that are impacted by the sewer line construction. That includes the parking lot, any landscaping trails or sidewalks that are impacted as a result of the construction. They will also be performing the work during June and July when we have a lull in the scheduled activities. To my knowledge, there's no active use of that park, at least scheduled active use at that park during those months, and so that would hopefully minimize any impacts to the public as well as to any park users. So with that, I will answer any questions. Also Rebecca Takeda with Parker Water Sanitation District is here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Council, any questions for Tom or Parker Water Sanitation?
I just have one. So when they, when they come back and replace the, and I don't know how much of the parking lot they're going to rip up, but are we going to have a hodgepodge parking lot? Are we going to figure out a way to redo like the half of it or?
So we'll make sure that they saw cut along what we consider a good location horizontally so that we don't have the patch going across several parking stalls.
She's shaking her head behind you, so we're good.
Okay. Perfect.
Great.
And then I have a question too. Construction timeline, because I certainly wouldn't want to impact the fall soccer season.
Yes, our intent is to get through this area. We'll start in June, and we should be through this area in the month of July. So we don't have any intent to affect fall.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will open this up for public comment. Is there anybody for public comment on this item at 7:55? Seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:55. Council, additional discussion or a motion, please?
I move to approve ordinance number 1.532 on second reading.
I'll second that.
Great. I have a motion by council member Lewis, a second by council member Pogue. Council, when the box appears, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. The next item is ordinance number 8.28.8 in second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend section 4.03.030 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning sales and use tax. Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council. Well, I'm not going to take you back 10 years like Tom did. I'm going to only take you back two years. So at almost exactly two years ago, council approved some language as part of the simplified tax definitions. This work came out of an effort that was going on statewide for all of the home rule cities. My sales tax team discovered a little bit ago, as they were working on a sales tax audit, went to read the language to make sure that the audit was being done the way it should be, and discovered that there were some important words missing. So the ordinance in front of you tonight is to add back those missing words so that the definition is what was intended as part of the process.
Great. Council, any questions?
So we're unsimplifying our simplification?
Oh, we're just going to keep it simplified.
But just for, for obviously for layman edification, we are not, we're not increasing taxes, we're not increasing our taxable entities, we're not doing anything, we're just cleaning up some language that got stricken.
We are cleaning up language by adding back in eight words by any means other than a common carrier. So that is the only change that is being made.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions, I'll open this for public comment at 7:58. Anybody want to talk about simplification of the sales and use tax? Seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:58. And council, additional discussion or a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 8.28.8 on second reading.
Second.
Great. I have a motion by council member Pogue and a second by council member Rivera. Council, when the box appears, please vote. All right. Motion passes unanimously. The next item, it's a long one, ordinance number 3.345, a bill for an emergency ordinance to impose a temporary suspension for 180 days in duration on the processing and approval of any application for a town of park or permit or license related to the operation of a business that would be engaged in the growing, storage, extraction, processing, or manufacturing of industrial hemp, or the extraction, processing, or manufacturing of industrial hemp in commercial products containing industrial hemp, directing the prompt investigation of the town's regulatory authority over such business pursuant to the authority granted by Article 20, Section 6 of the Cover of the Constitution, and declaring the intention for the town council to consider the adoption of appropriate town regulations with respect to such businesses if permitted by law. Kristen?
Good evening, council. So the General Assembly has passed Senate Bill 19240. It's currently awaiting the signature of the governor. This bill would authorize local governments, such as the town of Parker, to establish licensing requirements on businesses engaged in the growing, storage, extraction, processing, or manufacturing of industrial hemp or commercial products containing industrial hems. The staff is concerned that the town's current regulations are not adequate to address the location and public safety impacts of these sorts of businesses. So the purpose of this emergency ordinance is to temporarily suspend for 180 days the processing and approval of any application or permit related to the operation of a business engaged in these hemp operations. Town staff has determined that there are significant land use and public safety impacts associated with hemp operations while the town currently has general land use regulations. We would like some time to investigate the appropriate manner of accommodating hemp operations within the town, including location bulk standards, potential nuisance impacts, and proximity to sensitive uses. And while the town's code regulations may mitigate some of the public safety impacts, we want to evaluate the need for additional standards because of this new type of business activity. In the staff report, there were some examples of some of the concerns. I also have here tonight Detective Holmes from the Police Department who can talk briefly about the extraction and manufacturing processes and some of our concerns, as well as Randy Seif from the Building Division is here to answer any questions that council may have. I do want to take you, because this is an emergency ordinance, it goes into effect immediately upon adoption, and then we have to bring it back within 90 days for you just to reaffirm the ordinance, but because it hasn't been published on first reading and second reading, I just want to take you through the ordinance, which generally we normally would not do. On page two of the ordinance under section two, this immediately upon adoption of the ordinance, if it's adopted tonight, there would be a temporary suspension imposed upon the processing and approval of any new applications for permits and licenses by the town related to an operation of a business that is engaged in the growing, storage, extraction, processing, or manufacturing of industrial hemp, or in the extraction, processing, or manufacturing of industrial hemp in commercial products containing industrial hemp. And town staff would be directed to refuse to process, review, or approve any such new applications during this 180-day period. It also directs staff to investigate and prepare proposed regulations, if any, concerning industrial hemp operations within the town. In section six, you can see as required by our charter, there is a finding that this is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety in order to present, prevent the processing and approval of any further applications for town permits or licenses related to the operation of a business that would be engaged in hemp operations. And in order to allow the town, the town reasonable time to determine the extent of the town's regulatory authority over hemp operations, including our authority to license, zone, and otherwise regulate those businesses, and what regulations, if any, should be imposed by the town upon such businesses. And then at the end of that section, you will notice that the temporary suspension is imposed from the date of adoption of the ordinance for 180 days unless it is repealed prior to that date or extended. And so staff will be obviously in communication with council about our investigation and to putting regulations in place and whether we can put those regulations in place earlier than the end of this 180 days, or if we need additional time, we would come back for an extension of that ordinance. So with that, I'd like to introduce Detective Holmes.
Hello. I'm Detective Holmes. I'm with the Parker Police Department, been with them for 12 years and currently assigned to the Douglas County Impact Unit. And we've, we're, been dealing a lot with illicit trafficking of marijuana and things like that. So we've, this is a topic that we've kind of dealt with extensively throughout the past couple of years with the Douglas County Impact Unit throughout the county. And we were, we were talking with the building code enforcement and, or the building inspectors, and the big issue that we've seen is since marijuana has been legalized, we had ordinances established here in the town of Parker that regulated residential and, residential marijuana and recreational grows. And they've been essential for us in applying, in shutting down illicit marijuana grows just through those ordinances alone for nuisance. And so when we were talking about the possibility of hemp extraction and industrial hemp being manufactured here, the big issue that we saw was that nuisance issue. Hemp, as far as the process goes for marijuana extract, or hemp extraction is almost identical to hemp. You're going to use a lot of the same type of chemicals, and those chemicals can range from butane to ethanol to pentane, and they're highly volatile. So initially, what you're going to end up doing is taking whatever dried, whatever product you have from that hemp, be it the ground up leaves, plants, stems, and end up extracting all that out, along with the flowers or the buds from that hemp plant. And from that extraction, you get a material that has whatever, whatever liquid or whatever type of chemical you use to extract it, then you have to refine it so that you could use it in different types of tinctures, different types of butters, different types of material that is pure CBD or cannabinoids. From the cannabinoids is produced the CBDs, and so that's, that's the medicinal properties of the hemp itself. And so, so there's a lot of different issues that come up throughout this multi-stage process of, of the CBD extraction. Number one is the volatile chemicals, and that's, that's the biggest thing. In dealing with a lot of illicit marijuana extraction operations, which typically would use butane, which is just lighter fluid, they would use that, pull out the THC from the, from the trichomes and from the flowers of the marijuana plant, and then they, they would have to extract that butane from the THC itself, and it's in that extraction process that would cause those explosions and house fires and things like that. So with, with pentane, pentane, and really any type of organic solvent, whether it be Coleman Fuel, whether it be butane, ethanol, it's, it's all flammable. And there are guidelines within CRS on this, but it's just a matter of figuring out the issues as far as how is that going to be vented? How is that going to be dealt with? Is it going to be, is there special treatment that we need to consider in allowing these different types of extraction facilities for hemp and CBD in regards to making sure that there, that it doesn't collect, that it's not, because all these, all these chemicals in a gaseous form, which is what they're going to be, are heavier than air, so are they going to pool somewhere and do we need to deal with that? So I think giving time between us and talking with the Building Department and South Metro Fire, see if that, see if that's an issue. Number two is also the smell. This, as far as for the issues that, that we're dealing with now, if it's, if it's, if you're taking bulk hemp and you're extracting it from the actual plant itself, there's going to be an odor, and there's going to be complaints, and it's very difficult for anyone really to tell the difference between hemp and marijuana. People who grow it can tell, and people who deal with it a lot can, but for the mother driving down Dransfeld, and she sees a big bale on the backside, on the back of a trailer, that's going to be an issue, and they're going to think that that's marijuana because it looks almost exactly the same. So, and the odor itself, even though hemp isn't as potent in its odor, it still produces a smell, and it'll still be an issue that we will be dealing with at the Police Department because that's one of the main things that we get called on for our complaints and for tips is the odor from residential marijuana grows. And then number three would be just the ability that in a lot of the grand jury investigations and things that we've been doing is, is the ability for a legitimate business to run illegitimately. And so for dealing with hemp extractions, since the process is so similar, it is, it is very easel, it's very easy for them to take marijuana and THC extractions and, thank you, and getting that, and using illicit activity to, to move those, to move that THC, and without any of us being the wiser. So it's just, so I think the big thing that we were all kind of expressing is just what we did great was we established those ordinances with residential marijuana grows, both medical and recreational, and we were able to stave off a lot of the problems that Douglas, that other neighboring municipalities in Douglas County are now facing. I, I think we just need to, we just need time to kind of think about what the actual methodologies that we need to do and the ordinances that we need to apply that can keep everybody safe and make sure that we keep, that we use the medicinal bit of. That we use the medicinal benefits and the legitimate businesses that are here trying to run and set up in our community here, and then keeping anybody else out and making sure that everybody's safe when they're doing their actual extraction. So any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I guess I think it's... Thank you very much, detective. I appreciate that. I appreciate the testimony and the expertise. I want to make sure that we clarify that we are not taking a stand against CBD, and it's definitely been talked about, the benefits of CBD. We've seen some personal stories here with kids and seizures and other things. What we're talking about is the safety and the risk of extracting CBD from a hemp plant and the volatility that South Metro would have to deal with, and we want to learn a little bit more before we enact an ordinance against the production of CBD inside the Town of Parker, not the sale of CBD, correct?
Correct, yeah. And I think that's the biggest thing is that it... When in our work, in our education as law enforcement and dealing with this, is that we really have seen the huge benefits of CBD and how it can be... when it's done legitimately, how it can be life-changing for individuals. And so it really is a greatly beneficial aspect of it, and I think is, you know, one of those things that needs to happen and will happen. It's just a matter of making sure that we're doing it as safe as possible.
Thank you, sir.
Additional questions?
Michelle, will we have this on a study session before we ultimately come back to it?
Yes. During the period, we'll have several different study sessions.
Okay, okay. Okay, thanks. Any additional questions? I have a legal question. You know, we... A little before my time, we outlawed the retail sale of marijuana. There might be some people out there saying that this just sounds very complex. Is there a way for the town to just not have this, not do... not do this here in the Town of Parker? Kristen, could you speak to that?
That's certainly something we'll look at, but I believe that this is an area that where the state has taken the position that it's a matter of statewide concern and that it is allowed under the Constitution. This is a legal product. And so we are... With this bill, we're giving... We're being given legal authority by the state to adopt regulations, and so we are trying to take advantage of as much home rule authority as we are being allowed under the current legal framework.
Great. Thank you very much. Any additional questions? Seeing none, I will open this to public comment at 8:13. Anyone have any questions? Yes, sir. Please come on down. Name and address.
I'm sorry, did you say name and address?
Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Zoller. I live at... Do you mean address like my property address?
Yes.
Oh, it is 21760 Mount Albert Place. So I just wanted to tell the committee or the council members that I am an HVAC contractor. I have a Class A license in the city of Denver. I do a lot of work. I'm an independent contractor. I actually do have a company. I've actually built... Before I had my own company, you know, I was involved in hemp extractions. And I want to tell you that I actually wanted to answer some of the detectives' questions. You know, the concern about the odor, they actually do use carbon filters inside of these facilities. What carbon filters do is the air will flow through the filter, and it will take the odor completely away. If the odor does get through, it will be very, very, very faint. It wouldn't be like a dispensary, you know, where they're actually holding a whole bunch of marijuana flour in there, and you know, the smell actually does get out. So you have a supply fan that goes into the extraction, and then you have an exhaust fan that goes out of the machine. And so inside of the exhaust part that goes out of the machine, that's where the carbon filters are held. And I do believe that they are required to change the filter daily in the, you know, in the extraction facilities. So I do have a question for the counsel. Why not accept it if all state regulations are met? And what about the tax revenue that that actually could bring to the Town of Parker or, you know, even into Douglas County to maybe possibly put some of that money towards schools, you know, to provide money for those SROs that we need? So I'm new to this kind of stuff. So is this where you guys answer or...? No?
You speak, and...
We listen.
Yeah, we listen. You have three minutes.
Okay, and then also with the butane extraction and how it's heavier than, you know, heavier than air, well, so is CO2. The gas that we extract from furnaces going up through the flues from the roof, those are just as heavy. There's really no difference. And actually, CO2 is heavier than butane. Butane has... It's very, very light. It's not like natural gas and all the excess fumes that we exhaust through the roofs through each individual house. There's... It's actually a lot better than CO2. And that's basically all the questions that I have. I just kind of wanted to put my little input on that since I am here, and I am a licensed HVAC contractor.
Great. Thank you very much. Do you have anything else?
No, sir. No, sir, that's all that I have. I just kind of wanted to put my input on that and maybe answer some of the detectives' questions that he had.
We appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else for public comment on this matter? Seeing none, we will close public comment at 8:17. Counsel, additional discussion on this?
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Zoller's testimony, and I think that that's exactly what this moratorium is about, is us taking 180 days to learn what it is. How flammable is butane? How does it settle? Where does it settle? What are the circulation rates? What do we need to do to put into our building codes to allow this to happen? That's where we learn. We'd rather learn before than learn after the fact. So I do appreciate your testimony. I think we're going to spend the next 180 days learning a lot about HVAC and about circulation and about filtration. And I know that our partners at South Metro are very, very anxious to help us safeguard both their firefighters and the neighbors to these businesses, and I look forward to the cooperation that we'll see.
Great. Thank you. Anything else, counsel?
I move to approve emergency ordinance number 3.345.
Great.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Pogue, a second by Councilmember Rivero. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before counsel, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:18.